Welcome, everybody, on the call in order. Please rise for pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
... to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next is our invocation by, once again, Pastor David Doug Parlin. This could be his last hurrah. We said that last time, but he stayed in town until he got to Kentucky. So I'm glad you're still here. So, welcome again.
Thank you. And thank you for your kindness over these years to allow me to come and lead in prayer. We're scheduled to drive out a week from today to Kentucky Owensboro. The last verse of Romans 12, right before we read the passage for government and what God says, it says in verse 21, "Do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities. There's no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are pointed by God. Therefore whoever resists the authority, resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to evil. Do you want to be unafraid of the authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise from the same. For he is God's minister to you for good, but if you do evil, be afraid, for he does not bear the sword in vain. For he is God's minister, avenger, to execute wrath on him who practices evil. Therefore you must be subject not only because of wrath, but also for conscience' sake. For because of this you also pay taxes, for they are God's ministers attending continually to this very thing. Render therefore to all their due taxes to whom taxes are due, customs to whom customs, fear to whom fear, honor to whom honor. Oh, no one anything, except to love one another, for he who loves another has fulfilled the law. For the commandment, you shall not commit adultery, you shall not murder, you shall not steal, you shall not bear false witness, you shall not covet. And if there's any other commandment, all are summed up in this saying, namely, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. Love does no harm to a neighbor; therefore love is the fulfillment of the law. Let's pray. Father, we want to thank you once again for the opportunity to come and invoke thy blessing on this town council meeting tonight. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our president and all that leadership under him. We thank you for our state and our governor. We thank you for our city and our mayors. We thank you for Mayor Sears and this fine town council here that serves on the behalf of this community. Lord, we pray as the community continues to grow, the whole area all over Wake County is growing immensely. What a desperate need for wisdom as they make decisions, desperate need for every citizen with patience and to give support to those that are in leadership over us, that they make the right decisions, that we be faithful to be supportive, and, God, that there might be unity and harmony with the city council. We pray for safety to our law enforcement, for our military, for police and fire. We pray for our schools as they'll be ending the regular season and then the different times for the year-round school. And, Lord, the students, and we pray that it might be a great summer, and not only for the community, but for every home and family. And, Lord, in these days that we live, may we be reminded that, God, you love us. We thank you for sending your Son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins and rose again, that we might have forgiveness of sins and assurance of eternal life in heaven. So, Lord, we ask thy blessing on this meeting. May all things be done decently and order, and we ask thy blessing on our town, and this we pray and ask in Jesus' wonderful name with thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thanks for all your help. Bon voyage and safe trip.
Bye. If I'm back in the area ahead of time, I'm available. I'll let you know.
All right. Thank you. You're a good man.
I'm still here.
Thank you. Item 4 is adjustment approval of June 5, 2018, meeting agenda, Mayor Protem. Sit down, please. Hang on. There you go.
Make the motion to adopt the June 5, 2018, meeting agenda with the following changes. Defer item 7A at the request of the applicant. Second.
Let's move into the second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Item 5 is a public comment period, three minutes, please, and I have one signed up, and I see him here. John Delpi, come on down. For the record.
My name is John Delpi, and I'm speaking on behalf of my business at 600 Irving Parkway here in Holly Springs. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you. My purpose tonight in addressing you is twofold. First is to say that Taylor and I, my wife, are very grateful to all the current and past councils and town staff members that have made Holly Springs a great town for living, working, playing, and building a business. We are pleased to announce that we've entered into a licensing agreement with ASI Signage Innovations to become part of their national family of sign manufacturers. As a result of the licensing agreement, we are changing our name from Rodney Sign Company to ASI Signage Innovations, North Carolina. We are now part of a nationally and internationally recognized group of architectural sign companies that are known for the highest quality design and manufacturing anywhere in the country and even globally. Taylor and I will continue to own and operate the business here in Holly Springs, and we continue to be grateful for all of the support that you, and especially the Economic Development Department, have provided businesses in our great town. Second, we wanted to let you know how much we appreciate your service. We know that service comes with risk. As a veteran of 20 years of service in the United States Marine Corps, I and every other member of our armed forces and first responders, past, present, and future, certainly appreciate the risks associated with service. Your particular form of service may not carry the ultimate risk, but it does carry the tremendous burden of scrutiny and criticism for you and your families. When you and your predecessors, along with the town staff and their predecessors, made the choice to serve this town and its citizens, you knowingly opened yourselves up to enormous scrutiny and potential criticism. In these times, you and your families are all too often called out and ridiculed and not nearly appreciated for your actions. Marine Corps General David Shoup, Commandant of the Marine Corps and Medal of Honor recipient who passed away in 1983, is quoted with the following statement that may be more relevant today than when he said it. And I quote, "The galleries are full of critics. They play no ball. They fight no fights. They make no mistakes because they attempt nothing. Down in the arena are the doers. They make mistakes because they try many things. The man who makes no mistakes lacks boldness and the spirit of adventure. He is the one who never tries anything. He is the brake on the wheel of progress. And yet it cannot be truly said that he makes no mistakes, because his biggest mistake is the very fact that he tries nothing, does nothing, except criticize those who do things. Thank you for all that you do every day."
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yep. At this point in time, then, we'll close the public hearings and go to Agenda Item 6A, Request Communication, the ENSC Local Program of the Year, Aaron Levitt. Good evening, Evan. Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. This trophy's so big, there's not room for it on this table here.
It is huge.
Apologies.
Bring a wagon next time.
I'm here to talk tonight about the town's erosion and sediment control program, and a common misconception is that stormwater enters our storm sewer systems and gets treated at some mysterious treatment plant. In reality, stormwater runoff gets discharged into our local waterways, our lakes, our streams, and our creeks. Stormwater runoff picks up pollutants like soil, fertilizer, and trash, and carries them directly into the near stream lake or river. These pollutants are harmful to our environment and negatively affect our community. Sediment caused by erosion is the number-one pollutant of our waterways in the state. So most erosion happens very slowly, but it can be accelerated when you have land-disturbing activities such as construction projects. Disturbed land may have an erosion rate of 1,000 times greater than pre-construction rate. The construction process requires land to be left disturbed for periods of time. So proper design and the use of engineered measures like sediment traps and silt fencing can significantly reduce the impact of man-induced accelerated erosion and sediment loss. Now, the state has delegated the town of Holly Springs, along with 53 other communities in our state, to enforce erosion and sediment control regulations. As a part of this delegation, from time to time, the state performs program audits to check up on our enforcement of regulations. Holly Springs was audited this past year, and we received excellent feedback. Every year, the North Carolina Sediment Control Commission holds a local program workshop for all delegated communities, and besides from training, the workshop awards two communities, one large and one small, for programs of the year, and this year, Holly Springs was awarded the program of the year. So the NC Sediment Control Commission had the following to say about Holly Springs at the award ceremony. Staff members for the small program contributed two full-time equivalents to erosion and sediment control. At our review in December, the program had 152 open projects, with 3,027 inspections having been conducted over the last 12 months. Three notices of violations were issued during that time. This program was nominated by the Raleigh Regional Office, who observed that the program excels in regard to frequency and effectiveness of their inspections, that the program appears to have forged strong working relationships between their staff and the developers and contractors they regulate, and that the program has a well-designed website, which provides valuable information in a concise and easy-to-navigate package. Additionally, the Sediment Control Commission praised the small program for the management of their sites during the review in February. All sites that were visited during our review were in compliance. So tonight, I wanted to recognize the staff responsible, our key players in this program. We have Stormwater Administrator Darren Easter, Mark Tudor, who's our erosion control inspector, and Jeff Peters, our engineering technician, and then managed by Daniel Colavito, who's our program administrator and our environmental specialist. I'd like to recognize Daniel and ask him if he can come up and accept this fine plaque. So the plaque says, "The North Carolina Sediment Control Commission, Local Program Award for Excellence in Erosion and Sediment Control, Presented to the Town of Holly Springs' Erosion and Sediment Control Program, Small Program, May 3, 2018."
Congratulations. (APPLAUSE). Speech. I know, I know, a speech. Yes, I got it.
One minute.
I got it.
So I was here in February, and I told you all about our staff, right?
Right.
And it's a real thing, and that tells me that not just I see it, right? I'm lucky enough to do something that I believe in for a town that I believe in, right? And the people I work with are amazing. You know it, right? I just push paper and send threatening emails, basically. They do all the real work, and that recognition for them is a good thing. It's a good thing for us. That's all I got.
Thank you, Daniel.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's your information on that, of course. Agenda 7A, Public Hearing, Annexation A18-014528, Sunset Lake Road Property. Gina? I didn't see Gina.
You did the adjustment, the agenda adjustment on that one there.
Oh, 7A, excuse me. I missed that one. Is that later?
Yep.
Okay. Let's try 7B. Public Hearing, 18 REZ03151 Treatment Plant Road. Melissa Sigmund. Hi, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you this evening is a little bit different than many of the rezonings that come before council, in that this is a town-initiated request. So instead of having a private applicant, because the town owns this site, we are acting as applicant for this request. The property is approximately an acre and a half, located along Treatment Plant Road. As you can see, the request is to rezone the property from planned unit development and residential R-30 to RT Research and Technology District. So this actually consists of two parcels, one full parcel and a portion of an additional parcel, and is essentially a cleanup to provide us appropriate zoning to match the intended use of the property. To the west of the site is located the Utley Creek Water Reclamation Facility. As you can see, to the north, the property is vacant and undeveloped. To the east and south of the property is the Morgan Park PUD or PUD, a residential zoning district. However, the property immediately adjacent to this site is not intended for residential development, and it has been indicated for open space. The site is currently used for fiber internet infrastructure. It's an unmanned structure for Ting fiber services through an agreement between Ting and the town. For this site, there is proposed development that would be through separate permit for a satellite dish associated with the fiber facility. The current zoning of the property is split between the PUD district to the north and the southern half of the site, which is currently zoned residential R-30. This is not compatible or desirable with the adjacent water treatment water reclamation facility, as that is more of an industrial nature. The proposed zoning of research technology protects the existing infrastructure of the water reclamation plant and also provides appropriate buffering and transitioning to the residential uses that are in the larger vicinity to the south. The map here shows the current future land use plan, which does identify the site for the regional center to the north and then the property specifically as residential. However, this is obviously not consistent with the existing use of the site. As a result, in the coming fiscal year, there is a planned proposal for an overhaul or update to the future land use plan as a whole for the town. Through that process, sites such as this would be evaluated to ensure consistency with the existing uses in the area. As a result, at that time, we would expect to change the future land use plan to something more consistent with the use of the site, such as an industrial designation. The planning board did find, recommend approval of the property, or of the project 9-0, and found that the proposed zoning was compatible with the surrounding properties and appropriate for the location. With that, I would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions of Melissa? Or comments? I don't see any.
Nothing.
At this point in time, a little public hearing. James, if you can hear. I couldn't pronounce your last name. Will you help me? Last name?
Harris.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. And speak into the mic for us, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is James Harris, and I own the property adjacent to the property that you're getting ready to make a decision on. And I'm basically against, not necessarily the rezoning, but the entire project. This property is landlocked. It has no right-of-way. It has no dedicated right-of-way. Property that has no dedicated right-of-way does not get public utilities. However, this property has public utilities. If not for the town of Holly Springs fronting for the Ting Corporation, it would not be I agonized over whether to say anything or not, and then I got this brochure in the mail, the Ting Corporation soliciting people to buy its services. This is a for-real public company. My real issue here is, in order for the Ting Company to get there, they have to trespass. There is no public right-of-way, and where there is no public right-of-way, the only way to get there is to trespass. Treatment Plant Road is not public right-of-way. Treatment Plant Road enters my property from the north. The first 50 feet of Treatment Plant Road belongs to the state of North Carolina. The rest of Treatment Plant Road belongs to the piece of property that I own. And I'm here tonight to ask you to stop trespassing, to fix the problem. Rezone it, whatever. I'm not here to talk about rezoning. I'm here to ask you to stop trespassing. And that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, sir.
We own in fee. We do own Treatment Plant Road in fee simple, but, I mean, we don't need to debate it, but the town has title to Treatment Plant Road.
Okay.
Did you say the town has title to Treatment Plant Road?
Sir, we're not here to debate you.
I just wanted to hear what you said.
The town has title to Treatment Plant Road.
Again, thank you, and we'll close the public hearing and go to further discussion. Comments?
So it's not an easement, John? We actually have, so we're not trespassing, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
What else?
I think we're just discussing the rezoning right here, so it's a very limited...
Correct.
...vote right now.
Okay. Somebody want to head to motion? There's two.
Motion to accept the comprehensive plan compatibility statements stated in agenda packets as being true.
Second.
Motion made in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, number two. I think number two. There we go. Nope. There you are. Thank you.
Motion to approve rezoning petition 18-REZ-03 to change the zoning of 1.52 acres owned by the town on Treatment Plant Road to RT Research and Technology District.
Second.
Motion made in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 8A, Consent Agenda, Mayor Protem.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Motion made in second all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 9A, New Business, FY 2017-18, Grant Awards. Sheri is senior. Do you want to kick this off? Please.
Sure.
This will be Dan Berry, Sheri Lee, and Peter Bellson.
Yes. So we, after we received applications for our local community grants, as we do each year, and the grant committee, we looked over them. Basically, the process is people submit, go through the application process, submit the required information for grant approval. We take a look at what they're asking for, what their needs are, if they have received a grant in the past, how the grants are used, look at budget, things like that, and then we put together what we feel the grant need, and then we bring it to the council. And that's what we have done. So, with that being said, let me just a minute. I'm trying to find mine. Hold on.
I got it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, cool. Yeah. So in this year's budget, we had $15,000 allotted for the grants. I think we had $18,000 of requests. I don't know, was there an extra one on here? It says 20.
Yeah, I don't know if I missed a number or something.
Okay.
I think it was 18, not 20.
Yeah.
It should be 18.
Yeah, 18. 18 was the number we had for what was requested. We only have $15,000 allotted, so I'll go through each of the groups and organizations that requested it, what we decided to, you know, fund them, and then discuss as a council what we all think is appropriate. So the first one we have is the Holly Springs Food Cupboard. This is a group that we've supported numerous times in the past, to do a lot of good work here in town for families that are in need of food right here in our own backyards. The committee recommends a funded request of $2,500. Interact is a county nonprofit group that provides services for victims and survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence. While that group is not located within Holly Springs, the organization noted in their submission that they served 71 people who had Holly Springs as a zip code in their group last year. We're recommending funding them. We did fund them last year. We are recommending funding them again with $500, which matches the donation that we provided, or the grant we provided last year. The next group is the Holly Springs Civitan. This group puts on a dance for special needs children each year right here in Holly Springs. The committee's recommending a grant of $500, which is consistent with the past. Next group is the Holly Springs Martin Luther King Junior Committee. It's a very active group here in town. They have the Martin Luther King Community Parade every year to commemorate Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy. They also have a golf tournament to raise funds for their efforts, a community picnic open to everybody, and they make numerous grants to high school seniors in our community and provide scholarships for them. They've requested $500, the same as in past years. The committee is recommending a $500 grant for them. The next group, we did have three or four new submissions this year that haven't asked or haven't submitted an application in the past. The next one is one of those groups that's new this year. That's the Southwest Wake Lions Club. The Lions Club does a lot of efforts around helping children and families with eye care and doing eye screenings, and the group is raising money to buy a machine that they can have to do screenings for children's eye services right here in town and across Southwest Wake County. As this is the first year that they've requested a grant from us, we think it's fantastic, and we're recommending a $1,000 grant to the Southwest Wake Lions Club. The Holly Springs Community Band is a local group that provides new instruments to interested parties that want to play music and learn the arts and continue developing the arts here in Holly Springs. They do a lot of work at our cultural center, have two or three shows a year over there in partnership with the town. We've supported this group in the past, and the committee's recommending a $2,000 grant to them. The next group is also a new applicant this year, the Sense of Play Group. They're raising funds to build an inclusive playground for all children, including handicapped or special needs kids and families. This is, again, a new one, and they asked for $500, and the committee is recommending a grant of $500 to their efforts. The Holly Grove Middle School PTSA, this is a new one as well this year. They do mentorship programs and are kicking off a new effort for a garden project that will grow vegetables and donate them back to the food cupboard and teach kids a little bit about giving back to the community. The committee is recommending a $500 grant to them. The Holly Springs High School PTSA has a teacher grant program, which is one the council has supported in the past to provide materials for instruction to teachers. You know, I think a lot of us here, some of the challenges teachers have in getting the right supplies they need to educate our children, and this is actually a really interesting, you know, program. We've made donations in the past, then what happens is the PTSA will match whatever contribution or grant that we provide them, and then they use all of that funding to go and provide grants to their teachers to buy supplies for their own classrooms, and the committee is happy to recommend a grant of $1,500, which is the same they had received last year. The Holly Springs High School Band is another arts group here, and what this grant does for them is helps fund new instruments and continues the education and award-winning band program that the high school has. The council supported them in the past, and we're happy to recommend a grant of $2,000 to the high school band. And the last one we have is the Kiwanis Club. This was a new submission this year, but they do a lot of work here in town, probably most frequently seen at our Happy Holidays Parade and Kids Appreciation Day. They're the group behind there, doing all the hard work to pull those events together. They do receive parade revenues, you know, but I think what this grant fund would be used for is their Kids Appreciation Day efforts and helping them get that program, you know, take it to the next level from what they're already currently doing today, and the committee is happy to recommend a grant of $1,500 to the Kiwanis Club. So in total, the committee came up with $13,000 of grants to issue to the various groups that we discussed here this evening. That comes a little bit under the allocation that we have, so I guess we can discuss as a group, you know... a group, you know, how we want to handle the other two. Do we want to raise any of the groups that we have on here since we have the funding? Do we want to save that and return it to the fund for future use or, you know, something else? Or maybe there's other groups out there that did not get their applications in in time, and maybe we could consider them before the end of our fiscal year. So with that, it's up for discussion.
Comments?
I want to be clear that I am part of the Martin Luther King Committee. Just wanted to make sure people knew that. And I also wanted to add that I did tour the Interact facilities in Wake County, and I knew that they helped a lot of Holly Springs families, so I'm thrilled that they're being recognized. Because I had heard that some of our own police and fire staff have been paying out of their pockets to help with hotel rooms and things to aid some of those families, so I'm really appreciative that that's recognized. I'm trying to add up, so this slide that we're looking at is not the same as what you know. Okay.
No, so this slide, I think the left-hand column is what was provided in the past, but the groups that are N A did not request anything last year.
Okay.
So that's why the dollars are different. And then the column on the right is off by a couple thousand. I think we only had eighteen, we had eighteen thousand in requests. So what that means is that we didn't honor the exact dollar amount request for every single group. Some we did. They all submit financials and then tell us what they're going to use the grant for, how the grants have helped them in the past, and then the committee will discuss and determine, you know, what is the appropriate amount to fund the various groups that apply. And we came up with thirteen thousand out of the eighteen that were submitted as the appropriate amount we'd like to recommend.
I'd recommend that we, it's thirteen thousand, right? We'd have, what, two thousand?
We have fifteen thousand.
Right. I'd recommend that we save that two thousand for something down the road.
Something comes up that...
Yeah.
So we've done it in the past. I agree. And especially, I think we're going to start to see over the next year with these schools, some cuts in the arts departments and many things that could happen, so I'm okay with that.
Other comments?
Great work, guys. That's a lot of work.
Thank you for...
Thanks for your hard work there and being thorough on that.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Dan, for the presentation.
Yes, thanks.
I would, if I could just mention one thing. So if you're going to hold on to the two thousand dollars, do you think you'll spend it between now and the end of the fiscal year or allocate it? Or, because at June thirty of this year, it will kind of disappear.
Oh. We can't roll it into next year.
So, no, next year you'll have an additional fifteen thousand.
That's what I'm saying.
But at the end of this year, it will close the books on this fiscal year. So if you don't spend the two thousand by June thirty, you'll have fifteen thousand next year.
Are you got one more meeting?
One more meeting.
Yeah. You can come to the next meeting with your two thousand dollar recommendation if you want to do it that way. Makes sense?
Great idea.
Because it doesn't take too long to do that.
If there are any groups out there that maybe didn't get an application, I mean, feel free to reach out to the clerk's office or any of us and let us know. We're happy to consider it.
There is an application process, and it's not too difficult at all, so...
It's online. I deactivated it because it ended. You don't have to reactivate, but they can go online.
And where do they find? Do you remember?
It's under Town Council.
Okay. So it looks like their criteria, except for the Interact Club, are nonprofits that are five oh one C three with a Holly Springs zip code. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, let me pull up the spreadsheet. There's a couple of different criteria we go through and rank. Everything has a number value, so there's, like, one category is public purpose. Less than twenty-five percent of the budget is requested, so we're trying to see, are we funding this whole group by giving them a grant, or is it only funding maybe one program or one initiative that they have? Request is five hundred dollars or less. I think that's a reasonableness check, you know, are these, can we help more people with, you know, reducing the amounts of grants that we have available? Based in Holly Springs, right, we give a higher weighting to groups that are based in town. Obviously, it doesn't exclude those that aren't, but we, you know, we weight them that way. And then significant tangible assets, so if the group has over a hundred thousand dollars in assets or under, there's a different weighting that goes into there. So how much is our grant really making a difference in their efforts depending on how stable they are?
Okay.
Let me make this suggestion. Let's ask the committee to come up with a recommendation of the two thousand dollars by the next meeting.
Okay.
And that could be more or less in between. Hang on.
That's a great idea, and I'll go back and think. Without another new committee, anything that can go towards the schools, because I think of the number would be great, but I think going back and thinking about that would be a great idea.
That's good. So we need a motion with that added to it, please.
I think we can approve this and come back.
I don't have that chart filled out because it's on that computer over there, but did y'all make a note of the ones that, or do you need me to read off?
I have the chart here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you share it with everybody else?
Yeah. I'll send it.
Okay. So there's the motion.
Okay. Motion to award fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen community agency grants.
With?
Second.
With two thousand dollars?
With two thousand dollars to be determined.
By the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Please. Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you and thank you for your work, and we'll look forward to next meeting. Item item nine B New Business, Temporary Parking at Mama Bird's Lot, Mary DePino. There you are. How are you doing?
So the construction of Town Hall Commons is a very exciting venture for the town of Holly Springs, but it is coming with some minor inconveniences due to the combination of the construction activities in addition to some business growth, which is great for our town. Parking is coming at quite a commodity these days. So we're proposing to use the Mama Bird's Lot as a temporary parking area. So why this location and how did we get here? Well, initially, we were looking at expanding the parking lot at the Methodist Church that is across Avant Ferry Road from Town Hall, and one of our more talented engineers, Dirk Seeburn, wrote, actually designed a plan for that. But the design revealed that the grades on the site would be logistically difficult and costly to build. So we approached the church about doing a temporary parking area that is not doing any modifications and just using the grassing area to park on, but they came back with some stipulations that were not the most advantageous for the town. So they wanted us to put down gravel so that it wouldn't become a muddy mess, which is, you know, understandable. But in addition to that, they wanted us to, once the temporary usage was over, to create the permanent parking lot. In order to do all this, the cost of that was going to be approaching two hundred thousand dollars, and to yield thirty-two parking spaces really wasn't the best situation. That's roughly sixty-three hundred dollars a space. So the town had already been anticipating parking issues with the construction and had already been considering other alternatives. For instance, we were ready to, we'd already been considering, and actually, Public Works Department implemented a parking plan at the corner of Main Street and ARP. And so that really is a temporary parking space for the town employees, which yielded about eighty spaces, which is great. So now the employees shouldn't have a problem parking, but the issue of the public parking still remains, and this is just kind of the layout of the temporary employee parking lot. So the Mama Bird's parking lot, as you can see here, is already being utilized for parking by the two adjacent churches on the weekends, and it's really close to the office condominium, so it would be very convenient. People wouldn't have to cross Main Street to get to the offices. What we would be doing would be to just provide a layout that would make the parking lot more organized, changing the corner of Grigsby and Raleigh Street to a walking path and putting a crosswalk across Grigsby Avenue. So it would be much more cost-effective, it would be efficient and much safer, and still being utilized by the churches on the weekends and any events we have too on the weekends, and would provide a great public parking space for, you know, for the duration of the construction of Town Hall Commons. So with that, do you have any questions or comments?
I do.
Questions or comments?
Counsel, should I recuse myself because it's doing some work on the corner of our yard?
So there is no actual taking of your property, for one. For two, we don't really have any information at the town whether or not this land use will increase or decrease your property value. And what's before you is not really a land use issue that you're voting on. You're not really voting on whether or not, like, a rezoning, and you will not be benefiting financially from this transaction because the lease isn't with you.
Okay.
If the lease were with you, we would say, yes, you must recuse, and you'd have to leave. So I personally don't see any reason or any qualifying refusal criteria for you.
I just wanted to be clear.
Okay. Five hundred dollars per month for the temporary use, correct? Just to reiterate. There it is. Other comments before we go further? All good?
Is this open-ended? Is there any hard closed date, or is the lease open-ended, is for as long as needed?
Month to month?
Yes.
It is. It's a month to month with a sixty-day notice provision. Either party can cancel within sixty days.
Holly Springs Kirk enjoys the lot on Sunday, as does the other church. I don't know why I said that. Other comments or questions? Good?
Nope.
Okay. Somebody hit the motion, please.
Motion to enter a lease agreement for five hundred dollars per month for the temporary use of Mama Bird's vacant lot as a parking lot.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Item item nine C New Business, fifteen D P seventeen A oh three Holly Lakes at Sunset Commons, Sean Ryan and maybe Elizabeth Goodson. Okay. Sean, you're on.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This case is for Holly Lakes at Sunset Lake Commons, the shopping center that is under construction along Sunset Lake Road just south of Holly Springs Road where the Harris Teeter is located at. The specific amendment before you tonight is an amendment to the development plan to revise the elevations of the main building associated with this development. The Unified Development Ordinance states that a substantial change in building design constitutes a major amendment, which has to come back to the town council for approval, so that is why we are here tonight. You can see on the screen the difference between the originally approved building elevations on the top and the proposed building elevations on the bottom, and as you can see, the substantial architectural treatments of the tenant space in the shopping center have been removed primarily due to the loss of the anchor tenant. The applicant is here tonight and kind of explained their reasoning for the change in the building facade. I should note that the proposed building facade does meet all of the minimum standards of the town's Unified Development Ordinance for architectural requirements. Our planning board member, Rick Madoni, is here tonight, and I'll invite him up to talk about the planning board discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Rick.
Hey, Rick. So there wasn't too much to talk about here. The planning board didn't really have any issues with this. The way we looked at it is the anchor tenant that requested the changes to the design just pulled out, and we went back to the original design that was already approved. So if you look at that second picture on their bottom, that was what the original design was approved previously, so we didn't have any issues.
Questions, Rick, at all? No?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Would you like to hear from the applicant?
Advocate's here?
Yes.
Sure. All right. Not sure it's absolutely necessary, but again, name and address, please.
Daniel Brown, two one one six Rolling Rock Road, Wake Forest, North Carolina, two seven five eight seven. I am the developer of the shopping center. As Sean indicated, the elevation is, we are requesting a change. The elevation that we are proposing now was our original elevation. It had been given to the Fresh Market. The architects for the Fresh Market chose to change the elevation. At that point, that elevation that you show as Fresh Market is proprietary to Fresh Market. Subsequent, for reasons that I can't really disclose, the Fresh Market is no longer our tenant. So we would have an issue as it relates to that architecture as being proprietary, and we do, you know, believe that we have adhered to all the requirements of U D O.
First hand. Questions? That was helpful. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I do have a question for planning. Were there any variances given to approve that first design? I know we're back to the first design. Were there variances for that, or were we expecting that sort of design for that space?
For this, the top one?
Right. We're going back to the original one. Did the original approved plan have variances with it?
Not in regards to the elevations. The shopping center plans did have a couple of variances, but they were unrelated to the building elevations.
Any other questions, Sean?
Looks like there's some changes to the bay widths in the proposed versus what was already approved. Any reason why, you know, some of the outer bay widths changed from the approved version to this one, or is just to be more contiguous with what they're proposing as the anchor?
So some of the individual bays within the main building did shift after council approval. Those minor modifications to those building bays can usually be handled administratively because they're not substantial changes, as long as they're in conformance with our minimum building bay width requirements. So for instance, D and E used to be separate, space D, separate space E, and you can see from the new elevation, it's only one. It's been combined. So they've tried to maintain that facade of individual tenant spaces even though the interiors have been combined. So some of those adjustments do typically happen on the bay widths as the internal building design is worked out.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Looking good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion, please, number one.
I'll make the motion to approve the development plan, major amendment fifteen dash D P dash seventeen A zero three for Holly Lakes at Sunset Lake Commons with the conditions listed in the agenda packets.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Item item nine D New Business, seventeen D oh oh two A oh one Honeycut Farm subdivision amendment. Sean, you're still on, and maybe Elizabeth.
All right. This next agenda item is for another major amendment, this time to an approved development option subdivision. This is for the Honeycut Farm subdivision that was approved in November of twenty seventeen. And just to refresh your memory, the property is located along the north and south sides of Honeycut Road in between Pine Grove Wilbon Road and Cass Holt Road. This specific development plan amendment, again, it goes back to the Unified Development Ordinance and the statement that a substantial change in architecture constitutes a major amendment, and the proposed modifications to the recreation center buildings are substantial, as I will show you on one of the later slides here. So that is the primary purpose of this amendment, coming back to the town council. In revising the building elevations, some of the specific amenities at the amenity site were also modified, and then lots eighty-seven through eighty-nine were modified to conform with the town council approval condition number twelve regarding lot size. So this is the layout of the subdivision. Honeycut Road cuts across the middle here. The main recreation areas are on the south side of Honeycut Road in the area highlighted in red. On the top of the screen, you can see the approved rec center and community center that was approved with the original approval back in November. So this is Honeycut Road across the top. You have the existing farm pond, the champion trees that are being preserved. So you have the main recreation site and parking with a pool and a park area here, and you also have the existing structure to remain, small parking lot, and that will be the future community center. This is the proposed modification on the bottom. You can see a modification to the shape of the pond, again, preserving the canopy trees, additional open space, amenities provided south of the community center, walking trails, maintaining the barn and the smokehouse. And then over at the main community center, a modification to the shape of the amenity center, the size and location of the pool, and additional walking paths. I should note that a parking waiver to reduce the number of parking spaces at this rec site was originally at this rec site was originally granted by the town council. Uh, that waiver is no longer needed, and all of the required parking spaces at the rec center are being provided with this modification. On the top of the screen is the approved, uh, recreation center building elevations. Uh, as you can see, it's a one-story, primarily brick structure, uh, with an outdoor area as well as an indoor, uh, bathroom and pool maintenance equipment area. Uh, on the bottom of the screen, you can see the proposed elevations, uh, with a, a two-story or a, a one-story that is, uh, about two stories in size, uh, community gathering area, uh, metal roof, uh, hardy plank siding and stone. So you can see it's a pretty substantial change in the design, and that is what has, uh, triggered the need to have this amendment. Uh, the proposed community center in the existing structure, uh, is still proposed to remain, however, they are making some modifications to the structure, um, a small addition to the back, as well as changing the brick, uh, to a whitewashed brick from the, uh, existing, uh, red tone brick. Um, we should note that this, uh, property is, uh, on the twenty sixteen Wake County Historic Resource Survey as a potentially historic structure. Uh, we did consult with Capital Area Preservation, um, and initial con- consultation did not indicate that this structure was historically significant, uh, on its own. And then just to highlight, the lot changes that were made in conformance with council conditions, uh, eighty-seven through eighty-nine, which are closest to the Garrison subdivision, uh, originally approved around seventy-five-hundred to ninety-five-hundred square feet, and those are being increased to ten thousand square feet in accordance with that condition, uh, with lot eighty-seven being over twelve thousand. Uh, with that, I will invite engineering up to talk about their requirements.
Hello, everybody. Um, as far as engineering is concerned, um, there weren't any major modifications to the water and sewer layout that was previously approved with the Honeycut Farm subdivision plan. Um, but they are providing additional water and sewer services for the rec site and the, um, community center. Um, with transportation, um, a similar scenario, there was a, a previously approved, uh, TIA with Honeycut Farm subdivision project, and the amenity site with the rec center and, um, the community center were accounted for under that study. And the environmental issues, um, are the same that applied for the previously approved Honeycut Farm subdivision plan. Um, the project we require to meet the Town of Holly Springs NPDES Phase Two Post-Construction Stormwater Ordinance, and, uh, the project is located in the Cape Fear River Basin and subject to all of those requirements as well. Do you all have any questions?
Refresh my memory on the change of the pool, if you would, please. And we'll stick around.
So the shape of the pool and the size of the pool itself has decreased. This is the existing pool, uh, that was approved, and this is the, uh, revised pool here. Um, the applicant can probably answer your question as to, um, specific size of the pool reduction, but it did reduce, uh, in size somewhat.
Anybody want to know the answer to that? Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. Thank you.
And I will invite our planning board member up again to discuss the planning board discussion on this item.
So overall, as you'll see from the applicant, the planning board is pretty happy with the modifications that were made. Uh, it was an improvement. The couple of things that did come up, we were wondering if the dedicated open space changed, and it looks like staff from, said that open space had not changed, the same amount of, same amount of open space before as that there is now. And there was some concern with the glazing, the minimum glazing for energy efficiency on the building, and they'll discuss back and forth on whether we should even review it, but, uh, it will be required from the building permit to make sure all those numbers meet up, so it wasn't anything to be discussed.
I know. I know. Question? No? No? Thanks, Rick.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it again.
All right, and with that, I will invite the applicant up.
Name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Zemwalt, uh, with McAdams, twenty-nine oh five Meridian Parkway in Durham. It's good to see everybody again tonight. Director of our Planning and Design Group, I'm a landscape architect at McAdams. I'm here tonight with Randy Sexton with MI Homes. I've got, uh, Sarah Mo-Broton from LS Three P, our architect, and then Sarah Donahue, our landscape architect from McAdams. Um, Sean did a good job kind of covering things essentially over the last year or so as the projects developed. Uh, we, we've kind of, uh, developed, um, and refined all the amenities and really came to this conclusion that we needed a much bolder, bigger statement for the rec center. And when we went back to Sean, we did realize the, the changes we wanted to make were pretty substantial, so we needed to come back. Um, and so I wanted to go through and, and just kind of highlight some of the changes, but before I did, just one thing, I just wanted to re- reiterate, all the previous zoning conditions that were in place, none of those have changed at all. So I just want to make that clear. Sean kind of went over this, uh, this slide, but just to kind of reiterate what was here, this is the previous elevation, essentially a shade structure, uh, with restrooms, pool, uh, and pool, um, equipment room, uh, and some outdoor seating. And then the pool, uh, uh, two or three lap lanes, uh, some bubblers, and, um, some pool decking, and then a tot lot at this end. Uh, the existing sales center was located here. The size of the, um, original clubhouse was just a little over fifteen-hundred square feet, to give you a sense of the scale of that. The height, uh, the height of that structure was about twenty-two feet. So in going through the theming, we just realized that we needed to make a stronger statement, and so we, we themed the neighborhood as Honeycut Farm, and as a result, we hired LS Three P to come in and, and come up with a more dramatic signature building to sort of reflect this modern farmhouse style that ties into the preservation of the barn, uh, the smokehouse that we're going to be preserving. You can see here, the, the barn sits about right here, and at the time, we were going through the original development approval, we weren't quite sure yet that it was in the kind of shape that we could save it, and since we've analyzed it and realized we can save it, and so we want to kind of incorporate it in. So, um, without, um, dragging on here, this is the elevation of the new, it looks a little better like this than it does in the application, but this is actually a model, uh, that we created from the architect's images that shows how the, the new, um, amenity would interact with the lake. But I think the lake is going to end up being just a little bit further back than this because we're setting back from the lake a little bit to meet the stormwater requirements. But essentially, this is the, the layout of the site, um, highlighting some of the features, uh, the dramatic curtain walls here of glass, and that's what was discussed at the planning board meeting. Uh, some other images, stacked stone is being used along with, um, fiber cement siding, and then the, the standing C metal roof, um, is being used to tie the barn, the remodeled sales center, and the clubhouse together. The square footage of this, uh, facility is about fifty-two-hundred-and-sixty square feet, so it's, it's almost twice the size as the previous one. We've also added a separate, uh, pool building over here. One of the reasons we did that was, um, so that we don't have little feet dripping, walking through this, the clubhouse now, it's a much different feel. They can stay over by the pool, there'll be showers, there'll be changing rooms, restrooms, probably an area tucked around for a concession machine or something to sell sodas and things like that. In the main amenity here, we've got, uh, a fitness area here with glass out on the end, so people can be working out, looking out onto the pool or the, or the lake. Um, off the end of the fitness center is a covered yoga lawn for people to be able to do yoga in the shade off the end. We've got outdoor grilling areas here, an outdoor, indoor pass-through fireplace with outdoor seating, and just some terraces that allow people to kind of get down closer to the lake and interact with the lake. This structure inside would have, uh, some game areas in here, maybe there's room for a pool table or a ping pong table, um, and then also a small kitchen, not a full kitchen, but just enough for people to be out at parties and things like that. So that's the clubhouse. Moving on to, uh, a little clearer image, I wish I'd have given this to Sean before the packet went out, it's a little easier to read. Um, this just kind of highlights the changes to the main amenity area, and the main would be in, uh, expanding the shape of this pond to just kind of make it more significant, draw it over closer to the clubhouse, uh, and then we've added, uh, a network of trails, as you can see, that will interact with the barn, creating some spaces for, you know, outdoor picnics or maybe a little farmer's market, uh, tying the existing sales center in with, with the, uh, renovated barn. Um, and then, you know, cleaning up the barn, opening it up and allowing it to be, we're not really sure exactly what it'll be used for yet, but we're going to clean it all up, we're going to open it up so it can be a shade structure, or, you know, you could have parties inside it or something, you can rent it out for our kids, or reserve it for a kid's party, things like that. Uh, the network of trails would connect everybody from the neighborhood through to the rec center. Uh, we've added a dock with a boat launch off the side, and by boat, I mean, little boat canoe, you know, or some, some for kids to get out of.
Yeah. No cabin cruisers?
No cabin cruisers, yeah. Uh, separate mail kiosk over here. Uh, and again, um, you know, the, the pool, you'd asked a question about the pool. I'm going to be honest, the pool is probably so negligibly different that it didn't even dawn on us to check. It's roughly the same size, but one of the reasons it maybe got a little smaller, there were just so many other amenities that we added that we just needed a little more space in there, so it got a little bit smaller around the, around the, um, clubhouse there. With that, um, I think I've covered everything. Um, we're, we're excited about getting this going, and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
No, you go, talk.
Uh, so Bob, uh, the pool has changed, was a two-lane pool, right?
Two-lane pool, yeah.
Are there any water slides?
Um, Sarah, you, no, no, there's, what, what's a sun shelf, bubblers, I think? Okay, so a shallow area for kids, a sun shelf for, to be able to put lounge chairs that will sit in the water, and little bubblers that will kind of, as you're sitting in the shallow area, they'll just kind of bubble up and create noise, so, yeah.
So, um, just hear me out on this, as a former HOA president and, uh, resident of her neighborhood who just started after twenty, we're a twenty-year-old neighborhood, just started a swim team. Your pool is a huge amenity. Losing those lap lanes i- is big. Uh, so you might want to consider that, uh, just keep that in mind because right now it may not be a big deal, but it, down, down the line, you may say, hey, we might want to add a, you know, a, a little swim team, or we may, people, you might have a bunch of adults that, you know, hey, are going to want to use the outer part of that swim lap so all the kids are splashing in that sun shade, so just, that's just, just a little.
Yeah, sure.
Idea as someone who heard a lot about that.
Okay. It was a big, we had a lot of discussion about it.
I had a feeling about watching over there, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
It's funny, there's fifty-fifty because some people are like, I live in a neighborhood that has a full swim team, and I regret that I can never go to the pool for like three months a year because it's always busy, so half the people go, we want a swim team, the other half kind of go, eh, we don't want a swim team.
But see, that's, that's, I think that's one of those things with, with neighborhoods nowadays, is you have to, you do have to consider your entire population.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, having a few lap lanes, whether it's a swim team, whether it's for people just, adults just to do laps while the kids are splashing around the other end. So, um, but it being when you're, I know you have, you have more amenities than other neighborhoods have, which is awesome, but, uh, the pool is something that's.
Okay, that's a good point. We, and I think we, probably we can, if we wanted to tweak it, we could probably make some modifications. There's probably room in there for another lane, but that's a good comment, we'll consider that, thank you.
I would agree with that, too.
But it sounds, it does sound beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
And a lot of the, uh, subdivisions, especially like Holly Land and, um, they have slides for kids, so I'm just, you know, your audience that's in that area, they're, they may want to have something like that, but, uh, I don't know if that's something you could take a look at.
Yeah, we could take a look at that.
Like I said, if you look at the surrounding subdivisions, a good chunk of them have those,
Sure.
types of, uh, you know, water, water slides in that case.
Okay, appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Just giving you feedback there.
What else?
So my question is, are we approving the pool as is, or we're approving that they might extend it today? Because.
I think we're approving.
I don't think that's really, that was just kind of a.
Okay, so we're approving the amenity building, the building. And, um, okay. Cause I, I'm in agreement, I think, with the age, the population of, of the folks in our town and.
Yeah, just a suggestion from someone who's been there, done that, and.
I think it's the old story of, take a look at it and see if you can help.
Yeah.
Been there, done that. Yes, you got a question?
You want, why don't you go up?
You need to come up. Sorry. And you, you get to introduce yourself and where you live, too.
Hi, I'm Sarah Donahue, and I'm a landscape architect with McAdams. I'd just like to clarify that there are two lap lanes that we have included here. Unfortunately, because of size constraints, we weren't allowed to make them junior Olympic size, which would be more, or would be better for swim meets. But again, due to the, the site constraints, we had to make a few concessions, but there should be enough space for people to swim laps recreationally.
Right, and that, and that's, and that's fine, just, just those little things that sometimes can really make a big difference.
But we can definitely look at that a little bit closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Sean?
That is all I have, unless you have any other questions for me.
Sean, is there, um, um, the amenity center as a whole, does that count towards the active open space that they've already dedicated?
It does, yes. Yes, this whole site was part of their, um, developed open space requirement for the subdivisions, and it remains that way.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, motion, please.
Motion to approve development option plan, major amendment number seventeen dash DO dash zero-two dash A zero-one for Honeycut Farm with conditions listed in agenda packets.
Second.
What's been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item item nine E, new business, future land use and community char- character plan, consultant search committee. Unless it's a segment again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I mentioned earlier this evening, uh, next year, we will be embarking on update to our future land use plan and community character plan, um, per the, uh, proposed budget. Um, as a result of that, uh, that ca- that project, uh, we will be utilizing a consultant. And identifying the desired characteristics for the consultant will be very important to, uh, guiding the project and achieving the project's goals. Typically with, uh, uh, the process for, um, gaining a consultant and, and choosing a consultant, we would have a request for proposal and a committee to review those proposals. In this case, because, uh, developing the desired, um, request for proposal is so important, we are requesting, uh, from council, one to two volunteers to participate in the actual development of the request for proposal, RFP, as well as the consultant selection team. Uh, we would expect that this group would meet at least two to three times during regular business hours to develop the, uh, the request for proposal, as well as, uh, during potential interviews for, uh, consultant selection depending on, uh, the proposals received. Uh, there will be a separate steering committee for the actual, uh, land use plan development, and during the process, once a consultant has been, uh, retained, uh, so that would be a separate process. So this is simply for the very first stage of, of the project. We'd, um, like to have feedback and, uh, representation from council to ensure that we're, uh, taking into account viewpoints, um, of council members regarding, uh, that process. And with that, I'd take any questions.
Define, define the, the months involved in this, if you would, the very first, you said?
Certainly, so, um, we are looking to kick this process off as soon as possible in order to be able to present, uh, an RFP and put that out on the street as soon as the, the, uh, new fiscal year starts.
Right.
So we're, we are hoping to get started shortly, and as I said, we would expect two to three meetings likely, uh, to develop the RFP, and then once, um, that's out on the street and we start receiving the proposals, um, probably additional several meetings in order to review those requests and, uh, to discuss and, uh, make a determination.
So that would go from June to August or June, July?
It, it, it could run, uh, June to August. Um, we would hope to have consultant, um, underway certainly by, um, by early fall. So, a, a few months and, and as I said, probably, um, you know, maximum expected of, uh, five to six occurrences during regular business hours.
You need two, two to three, you said?
Uh, one to two, um, and that's, uh, dependent on the council's wishes.
Can I ask a question? I'm honing in on the community character part. When would we get input from the community? Is that part of the RP or after we get a consultant?
That would be after we, um, we obtain or retain the consultant, and that would, the steering committee then, uh, could certainly include members of the community, representatives, um, as well as additional general public feedback and input. So that would be once we've, um, we've got the consultant underway.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? How about volunteers, one or two?
Just a quick comment, we've also got the bond committee, uh, after this or whatever, so between both of them, it's four of us, I guess, if you split up two and two, just between both of them, it's four of us, I guess, if you split up two and two, just something to keep in mind.
I'll, I'll volunteer for this one.
Hey, Sherry? Anybody else? You didn't need one or two, correct?
Correct, one or two.
Anybody else? You win.
Nobody else wants to join, okay.
I think. Last call.
I'll help if there's marketing to it, but I don't think that this process, so.
All right. You still win, okay. Sherry Lee.
Okay.
Motion to appoint somebody.
Motion to.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Sherry Lee to work with staff in the consultant selection process for the future land use and community character plan.
Second.
Motion made in second or favor.
Aye.
Opposed? I know you can't oppose it, Sherry. Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Get there. Item item nine F, new business, Avant Ferry Road widening, additional funds for Duke Energy relocation, Town Hall Springs number twelve dash oh oh three, Dirk Seibinbrot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk.
Good evening, Mayor Sears, good evening, that's too loud, oops, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Sears, good evening, Town Council. Tonight I would like to request additional funds for the Avant Ferry Road widening project, more specifically, additional funds for the Duke Energy utility relocation. In two thousand fifteen, the engineering department secured federal grants for the design right-of-way and construction for the widening of Avant Ferry Road from NC fifty-five to Piney Grove, Wilbon Road, now called Ralph Stevens Road. I'm gonna start with a quick overview about this project, just in case. I think we all should remember this, but I just wanted to refresh our memory. So parts of Avant Ferry get widened where indicated on this map. The majority of the northern, or should I say northwestern side gets widened all the way to Paddock View Drive, which is the Morgan Park neighborhood entrance, and on the southeast side, the parts as indicated on here would get widened on the other side. In addition to that, the median here will receive landscaping. Right now we just have a concrete median in the middle, and also in, in this case, the median gets extended. At this point here, we'll see a continuous T intersection being installed, and going forward, forward to, towards the sheets, right again, back at Morgan Park, will have additional crosswalks installed. So that's just a quick overview. So, on October eighteen, two thousand sixteen, the contract in the amount of sixty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents to Duke Energy was approved by Town Council, and funding was approved in the amount of seventy thousand dollars for utility relocation work along Avant Ferry Road. After that, relocation work could not start immediately due to unforeseen utility conflicts, construction drawing changes, and necessary right-of-way acquisitions. In the meantime, Duke Energy's supplier contracts have experienced an increase in rate structures, and in two thousand seventeen, there was a significant change in federal tax law. That change eliminated the tax exception that this work was previously under. Altogether, this caused the estimated price to increase by twenty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cent. Here again, these are preliminary construction drawings, just the same, so this median gets landscaped, this one gets landscaped and extended, we have our continuous T, which is, sorry, which is safer as what is there right now. Again, extending here towards Morgan Park will have three crosswalks and widening of Avant Ferry Road. Before I propose the change, are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
Could you explain the continuous T, because some people were, I don't think, were on council when we originally went over that?
Okay.
And how that, how it works?
So previously, you will have vehicles that would, I wish I would have a map that shows the existing conditions as they are right now, but you will have vehicles that would wait to take a left turn onto Avant Ferry Road, and would sometimes be in conflict with vehicles that would just go straight, and not only do they, do you see, do we see accident happening here where they pretty much try to merge, but you also see accident happening here, because we don't have a light here right now. Well, this has nothing to do with the continuous T, I should take the light out, but due to this controlled left turn and left turn, left turn coming from NC fifty-five, and left turn going on to Avant Ferry from, from, from the side road, this continuous T is much safer than what is there currently. Hope that explains that.
You want to add something?
I'll add one thing, too, just because I was working on the project at the very beginning. With the continuous T, what's there today, the existing signal, in the afternoon, we were having timing issues with, when that light turned red to let the shopping center traffic turn left, people would back up onto the bypass. And so, the continuous T, in addition to what darkest day and with safety, it allows that outbound through lane to not have to stop.
Correct.
At that intersection, so it helps with overall PM peak efficiency. They will have to stop once they get down to Piney Grove, but it gives them a little bit more distance to stack up to alleviate the stacking off the bypass. And it's a newer technology, it's innovative, there's not a lot of them around, and it was identified early on, three or two, we were working on it, we were presented with the problem and did a bunch of research, and that was what came out of that.
Stop all traffic, there's a pedestrian crossing, that would be sort of an activated situation.
Right. It goes in the one way now when you're making that left, so you get through and then you're merging into the through lane? Kind of looking at that route?
There's two dedicated, there's two through lanes.
There's one through lane.
Quite from that point, right?
It looks like that median is like the lane, right? And that's, I guess I'm missing the other.
Right, so there's, there's one through lane, because it's from the bypass.
Yeah.
And at that point, it's kind of where it papers into, two lanes going through, once you pass the continuous T and westbound, so that the people making the left out of the shopping center will, has to become the next lane.
So they have a dedicated lane coming out.
Correct. Correct. The median is extended quite a bit, to make sure that people don't kind of just go into that other lane.
It's. From the, it's like three lanes. So the median splits the two lanes.
So, yeah, but you.
And you can split the two lanes?
Here you can see that.
The continuous.
What Mr. Levitt is turning left, and then just extended, just staying here on the, in this lane, pretty much.
So it's one, one lane right off the bypass, all the way through, and then the other lane is if you want to turn left inside Village Walk.
But it extends back from here.
And then that picks up the other left lane when somebody comes out after the T.
Village Walk is down here.
So there's a physical that, that red is physically gonna be there. I'm trying to envision how that, I mean, you guys.
Maybe let's go back to this overview.
So the red is gonna be physically built, so a car comes out.
Right, yes.
There are two lanes now, so we're gonna say the left lane will have to turn into Village Walk, and the right lane stays and goes through.
Correct.
But then they have to turn and dip at the red part?
The red is concrete monolithic island, and then the green is landscaping.
Okay.
So the, the red is sort of directional concrete to force the movement.
Is anybody?
It's not that much different, like today you have to do that left over into Village Walk, or, or you can go through, so it's not that different, it really starts to change from that point on.
It'll be interesting.
On the other side of the, okay, now I understand, they're on, the other lane is, they're on the other side of the red.
Yes. Yeah, it looks like it's on the grass right now.
It does, it looks like they have to go over the red part, and, okay, gotcha, I understand now.
So there won't be a problem when, with stacking, turning, if people turning left onto Ralph Stevens starts to stack back, and then people turning left off of.
The wide dispatcher.
On that inside lane, well, it'll, I guess as we get closer, we'll talk more about it, but.
Well, it's, this is getting ready to go to bed, so I mean, the design is approved.
Is done, yeah. I'm just trying to get a better idea of how it's gonna flow, and we always know there'll be a little bit of change when we start out, but as we're getting closer, it's gonna be important to really, to explain this and really break it down. Didn't, I remember one time when we were showing something, I don't know if it was the U-turns or what, we had a cute little diagram that showed the cars. Yeah, maybe we can do something like that again, as we get closer.
This was for the same project we had that. Yes, we saw the cars going in here, and I should have pulled that up.
That'd be great.
Next time.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, what else? Good? Zip to a motion?
Oh.
There you go. One motion.
Motion to adopt a budget amendment to move twenty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents from street reserves to the Avant Ferry Road widening project account for the increased cost of Duke Energy Progress Utility Relocation.
Second?
Motion made in second or favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, thank you, thank you, Dirk.
Thank you.
Item item nine G, new business, transportation bond committee assignment, Kendra Parrish.
All right, so at the direction of the council, we've continued to step through onto the twenty-eighteen transportation bond referendum, met with LGC and some past agenda items, you know, that have passed, or we're continuing to move in that direction. The next step is, as you know, staff can provide factual information, but as we get closer to the, the voting day for the bond referendum, we need a third-party advocacy group. And so what we wanted to do is to create the transportation bond project committee, and the purpose of that committee is to serve as an advocacy group, give guidance through the process. From our workshop, we had a map with the projects, and they were split into two different groups, but we want to have this committee get together, vet that, and really it's the messaging and how to get it out to the voters, get it into the hands of the voters, get them talking about it. I think it's great to have people on both sides, maybe support and non-support, to make sure we have a diverse group that, you know, we can get the best, best solution out of that. So what we wanted to have is the council to appoint a couple of town council members, maybe a planning board member, we're just, we're open, maybe some residents, just to have that committee. I've been speaking with the town engineer in Fuquay, they had a committee once they passed their bond, well, it was prior to their bond, and so I've got some ideas of agendas and outlines, but I'm thinking at least meeting once monthly from, between now and then, maybe twice a month.
Bless you.
Maybe necessary, so I think just tonight, getting the committee set up, and then we'll talk about, you know, probably a kickoff meeting and starting to step down that road, pun intended.
Discussion, questions?
How many people did Fuquay have, did you?
They had five, bless you. They had five, and their sixth member was the assistant town manager, as just sort of liaison, and then I think the mayor was the chair. Seems like a small number to me, but.
Yeah. Not that big for us. So are you asking, are you asking for council people?
Yeah, two town council members would be ideal, a planning board member. If there's residents, I think we had seen in some emails, if there was a resident from maybe the west side, the central or downtown area, the east side, I think a, a representation geographically would be great. If there's anybody from, I know like, a lot of these different boards that we have in town, a lot of folks have technical backgrounds that would work well here. Maybe some of the, the folks that have applied for those boards but maybe didn't get appointed, but maybe they're a close runner-up, maybe this would be a good spot for them. We also have a couple folks that are very interested in transportation and attend all the workshops and all the meetings. That would be great, to be on the board committee.
I can think of a couple people.
So you're looking for two council members for starters, right?
That would be a great place to start.
All right, do I hear volunteers?
I'm interested, too.
You, too?
Yeah, I sent an email out.
Three?
Requested, I'd be happy. They're first in, I'm not gonna fight them for it.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be Christine, Tom, and Pete, correct?
Okay, if it's three, is that?
That's three.
If it's three.
Four is one.
Oh, gotcha.
Three's a majority, though.
I know, I thought we could only have two together.
Two would be, you'd eliminate two.
You think?
If we get three, we might get a decision.
That's true. Who would like to go, no?
Who wants to be a backup? Who was the third person?
All right, Tom is the backup.
Okay, you can be the alternate, there you go.
All right.
All right.
Planning board, suggestions?
Uh, could be Courtney or Ernie. I don't know.
Ernie's the chair, right?
Yeah.
Ernie would be good, I think.
Ernie or Courtney?
Where's Courtney?
She's in Sunset Point.
Okay, that might be a good.
Sean.
Ernie's in Sunset Ridge.
Is he? Okay.
I believe he is.
Yep.
Oh, you know him. So.
Well, we gotta ask them.
Appointing them.
Ah, we'll just do it.
Yeah.
Well, subject to their approval.
What's that?
Or if you're interested.
Yeah, are you interested?
Are you interested?
I'm on the east side now, but.
Oh, that's true, okay. Or, so who do we say for planning board?
Courtney?
Courtney or Ernie?
Well, can we get two?
Sure.
How about Courtney and Ernie?
All right, that's planning board.
With their approval.
With their approval.
With their approval, yeah.
Make sense?
There is a commitment there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, residents, or people from other boards, maybe?
I might need more discussion, maybe an initial meeting with the, the people we just discussed.
Okay.
And I can reach out to some of the folks in the center part, because I don't know if we have anybody.
Okay, so, we could meet, maybe just have a quick kind of kickoff meeting with town council, planning board, staff, and then identify residents, and we need to get them on board quickly, so.
Right, right. We can get the word out there.
Okay.
And ask.
Would we consider having somebody that was successful over in Fuquay on the board? We do that sometimes, have somebody from Fuquay?
Or ETJ?
Or ETJ, but Fuquay, I'm thinking, because they were on the board, they've already went through this.
Oh, okay.
And we also are reaching out to a Campo representative and a DOT representative as stakeholders, because that's, you know, some of our projects are only gonna happen if we have funding partnerships, and what better way to engage them early on in the process as a stakeholder, so we'll be reaching out to them. I think ETJ is good, you know, Fuquay, we could ask some folks from, I don't know.
I'd rather have residents.
Would this committee be the one to help facilitate the workshops, or is that something that we were gonna look, I know we talked about it briefly, where we might have maybe the chamber be part of this?
Right, I think this was in lieu of the chamber, and we actually wanted the, a chamber representative in our group as well.
That's what I was thinking, to add maybe a chamber member on.
Yeah, definitely, the chamber member, and I think this is in lieu of the actual chamber doing it, but having chamber representation.
Yeah.
I'm glad you said that, because I think when I sent out the original email that said, be brainstorming, who, I think I also put in there that we'd like chamber representation. So I think adding.
I was just gonna mention, I've talked to Christine Quanti, who I believe is in the back row tonight, and she has expressed interest in, in being a part of this, this committee.
How, how great is that? Hi, Christine.
Okay, so we. Okay, so we could add her to this core group and then we'll identify residents. Is that what we want to do?
I think so.
Perfect. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. Anything else on that? We miss anything? No? I guess we need a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Somebody, remind everybody who's what. Did you write them down?
I did. Yeah, I have a list.
Okay.
We have a list.
Motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Villetson, Councilwoman Kelly, Councilman O'Brien is the alternate.
Yep.
Uh, planning board member Courtney Patterson and planning board member Ernie Carpio to serve on the transportation bond project committee.
Subject to their.
And Christine.
Christine from the chamber.
Subject to their approval or.
Approval and then residents.
Planning board.
Good? That's it?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
What a great volunteer group. Probably have to twist arms. Oh, I didn't.
Don't twist yours.
No, I know, I already did. I did. Okay. Number 10, other business. I'll do my crosswalk safety pitch and also ask Ms. Parrish to give us an update on all the lighted, wonderful push button blah, blah, blah that is coming down the line very quickly, I think.
Yes, so staff has been working on the RFB. It's a reflective beacon for the pedestrian crossings and Dirk provided an update that, um, all the, the markings, the paint striping and the markings have been put down and the next step is to get the poles up and get the actual flashing beacons installed and we're expected to see those go up in the next couple of weeks.
Yay. Thank you so much.
And thank you to staff for pushing that project. That was a little tricky.
It was good.
Quick question, Kendra, about the, um, installation. Are those beacons, are they, is the height adjustable? Is it just what comes to us? Is the height adjustable on those, on the flashing beacons, on the poles?
The height is up.
Okay. The reason I ask is we, um, the few that I've seen over the last couple of months, even though they look, they're probably about the same size, how you view them and how they catch your attention have been very different depending on the backdrop. So for instance, down in Wilmington, if we're approaching one and there's a lot going on behind them, they, they're high and they kind of get lost. If you're somewhere else, uh, a different area, same height, not a lot going on, easy to catch your eye. So that's something I think, I, I mean, I know we're, we're replacing them, we're placing them, but that's something I think in the future, as we're going forward, we're really going to have to, to, um, consider because it was a big difference.
They will be.
Well, I know it's one thing to see them, but it's one thing for these to really catch your attention when there was a lot going on behind them. And where it really made me think about it is right out here as we start to have a, a kind of a change in our landscape and our downtown view. So it's just something to think about when we get these first ones put, um, installed. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Do you always have features that will try to catch your attention in the top of the main street of the, I guess.
Right. Right, exactly, exactly. Oh, they're huge, they're huge.
Are you conscious of the way they're RRB or they just have flashing?
Oh, no, the whole, so, well, what we saw, they were pretty massive and the, the whole thing, this lit up and then there was a light. I mean, there were like four different structures on, things on them that.
The, the way they seem, big old.
It was, yep. Yep. And again, it was so different in the different locations that we saw them, you know.
If you have a bunch of light behind it, it might.
Right. Or distraction, so. I, it was just something that really grabbed my attention to think about. So we'll see.
Okay. Also, today we had a groundbreaking at Point One Holdings in Hathaway announcing the development of a new luxury Class A multifamily apartment project coming to Holly Springs. And, uh, that's on Ralph Stevens Road, it's out near the, the Holiday Inn, not Holiday Inn.
Hampton Inn.
The Hampton Inn. 316 units and today in attendance was Daniel Weeks, Gina Clapp, Matt Byrd, and Christine Quanti and I had the wonderful pleasure of speaking. So she was there and I was there. Just want to catch up to date. Last point.
I was there.
And Christine Kelly was there too.
Oh, I missed Christine. I'm sorry, Christine, I did have that on here.
Christine squared.
Yeah.
My mistake. Also, the last comment, don't believe anything you see on Facebook. That's all I got. Who else?
I got two things.
Sure.
Um, thoughts and prayers go to former Mayor Ham Womble and Gerald Holloman. Uh, they're going through some health issues right now. And I want to congratulate Councilman Dan Berry and the Penn State Nittany Lions for winning the Division One Club Baseball World Series Championship. Uh, we were at the, the final game and it was exciting with, uh, they had played ECU and, uh, I, I sat there, Dan was so excited, he was in tears congratulating the, uh, the manager of the team. I thought he was going to give him a hug and I said, don't, he's sweating musically. But, um, that was exciting. Um, also thank you to our sponsors, GMA Supply and Zaxby's. And the feedback I got from the Penn State folks is that, uh, they've never had a Zaxby's and they were there, um, every day.
That's awesome.
Lunch, breakfast. They just love Zaxby's. So, uh, kudos to Parks and Rec that put on such a great event. And, uh, as far as I understood, uh, Penn State said they were going to come back and, uh, win another back-to-back championship. I don't know what, ECU, I mean, they played really, really well, but, uh, it was exciting, it was loud and, uh, again, congratulations, I, I, it was great.
Yeah. Proud alumnus here and also, uh, Matt Beard in planning with the Penn State too.
Oh, okay.
He and I can celebrate together.
And in this, it actually prompted a lot of discussion about, um, getting another hotel in Holly Springs, uh, so that we, they really want us to, and we're working on it. You know, it's, it's really not completely up to us, but our economic development is, um, we really like to do that, so that's going to happen.
Been working on that for a while.
Yep.
Um, and I guess talking about sports, I want to give a, a shout out to our neighbors. Uh, Fuquay Arena has some, uh, state champions with soccer and baseball.
Yep.
So very exciting. Women's soccer and men's baseball.
What else?
I have a few things and they're kind of more, not as fun as what you guys just talked about. I did want to highlight, um, John Roberson from the landfill sent an email today and for those, I, I heard there's a lot of folks that watch and read the minutes, so please, if you are in the vicinity of the landfill, please sign up for the alerts. Uh, we need your help. They were saying that they got complaints after having hardly any complaints today. There was complaints about the odor and I didn't, I wanted to, yes, um, they are aware, getting the complaints logged is what we need. So everybody has homework. If you smell something, please get on the form and fill it out. But they are acknowledging that they heard the complaints. They are working on setting the odor mitigation system to the max for the next 24 to 48 hours to try to make that better. Um, in addition, the landfill operations will transition over the next few weeks to, to focus on putting more dirt over the, the garbage every day instead of the spring of what they do now. Um, so they're on it and they are only on it because people are complaining and letting them know. So please help us make our town better, um, to help with that. On the theme of, of smells, I've also been having some residents downtown that are asking if we could have some dog bag stations because we have a lot of pedestrians that are walking around and especially with the black dog, um, bar coming. Um, it's just something that people are noticing now, we have a lot more pedestrians, so we could certainly use some help with, with our fellow dog owner friends. Um, I wanted to also ask, in the consent agenda, we talked about the Parks and Rec, we talked a lot about policies and social media policies and that's one of the action items that council has to, to work on once. I don't know, we haven't said anything. Is there a sense for when we wanted to start talking about a social media policy? Is that a workshop that we need to do or?
Who, I mean, who, who would, who would?
Who would lead that?
Who would lead that?
Who would write that up?
I can, I can help with it, but I don't think we need a workshop. I think in a regular meeting it would be.
Do you take one from, find one from another town or piece together, do you piece together?
Well, Durham, Durham has one.
Are you talking about the, you said social media policy or are you talking about one that governs how the town council or how we, the staff members? We have ours that we follow.
This one was in reference, we talked about the boards and the council having a policy that we can adopt and abide by is my recollection of that discussion.
Something I would want to have all the input into, I would think, right?
Right. So separate from our communication policy?
Separate from the employees is specifically for the elected officials.
Well, there's one we follow too.
Right.
This is, I mean, part of our, so that's what I'm wondering, is it separate from that, from the communication policy that we should all adhere to?
We don't have one specific for social media though at this point, right?
Not, not something that's specific to the elected officials and appointed officials, but I can check with some other towns and see what they have.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I need to know what a social media policy consists of, um, and why we are, why, why would we go forward with one, those type of things. So that's why I want to see one. I know we, I, we have talked about one at the retreat and stuff, so I guess just dig into it a little bit more, um, because I'm going to continue to post on social media in, you know, effective way if people ask me stuff. Um, I'm probably, I do more so than, you know, in a different way than other people on here. Um, but I want to see what the other towns have to say and how they, how they list it and things like that.
I'd like some of that for y'all.
Mm-hmm. That'd be great.
And the staff, send us the staff one with that too.
Yeah, the staff.
Staff policy, if you could send us that one.
Because we said this would affect committees, everything.
We did, right.
Right.
It was just a loose end I wanted to bring up that we had discussed. And I just wanted to shout out to the staff that's been great with helping with a bunch of questions. Adam's, Adam and your team put together a lot of information that we're going through and that's much appreciated on Parks and Rec. Our arena and Daniel met to talk about economic development with me, so, um, the staff's been great and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Mary as well, she's, uh, taking our, our emails for the, um, budget. So thank you to all for, you're so accommodating and so responsive. I just wanted to, to acknowledge that.
Okay, what else? What else? If not, the interim town managers report, Daniel Weeks.
Right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items tonight. The first one, just a reminder that next week, Thursday and Friday, going on at Town Hall, we have a town manager assessment process.
Right.
Uh, through developmental associates. So that is June 14th and 15th here at Town Hall.